Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for 2020, 2021 City Council.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Leah Kazuko to sing the National Anthem. And then I'll ask everybody, please be standing so we can salute the flag after.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Leah. Leah happens to be a Chelsea High graduate last year, 2019, is studying. And she's at Berklee School of Music, studying music and conducting. Thank you. Now I'd ask everybody. Now we will salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to call the roll call, request for the roll call.
Counselor-elect Zabit. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor-elect Taylor. Counselor Ray Coopero. Counselor Robertson.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor-elect Melinda V. Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Abadana.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll call on Counselor Vido.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I will accept the call of the meeting.
Under suspension. See no objection, so moved. At this time, I'd ask the city clerk to administer the oath of office to the council body as a whole. The councils, please stand up.
I.
Leo Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the member.
As the member of the City Council. According to the best. My abilities and understanding. Agreeably. To the rules and regulations. And the Constitution. And laws of the Commonwealth. And the Charter. And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations, councils. The chair will call on Counselor Garcia.
I make the motion that the rules for the 2019 City Council be the rules for the 2020 City Council until such time that the Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances meets and recommends otherwise.
Of the rules.
Just need to do it once.
That's it. Motion is so adopted.
Motion is adopted. Chair calls on Counselor Recupero.
Move that that ceiling for 2020 be drawn at the organizational conference held on December 16, 2019, in the City Council Conference Room. Counsel.
I second the motion and ask to adopt the suspension.
No objection.
Seeing no objection, so move. The chair will call on Counsel Brown.
Move that the roll call for the 2020 be drawn as organized in the conference rooms held on December 16, 2019, in the Chelsea City Council Conference Room.
I second the motion. Under suspension.
Motion is so adopted.
Motion is so adopted.
Open the nominations.
No, not yet. I want to speak. At this time, I'd like to welcome all to the first Chelsea City Council meeting of the year, and in fact, the first City Council meeting of the decade of the '20s. It's truly an honor to have been returned here by the voters and to be joined by my colleagues, who have similarly been chosen to lead our great community during our term in office together. For me personally, I still get very excited about the start of a new session. However, as the length of my own service as a City Council continues to stretch, dare I say, I'm now at 30 years. Each new session has me a bit more reflective of the past, especially now as we close one decade and embark upon the next. As I stood in this very spot 10 years ago, times were different, for sure. In 2010, I think I was still using a flip phone. And when I heard someone say, "Amazon," I still thought first of the rainforest. Our economy was different. We were just coming out of the Great Recession back then. And although we in Chelsea had a good run at the first decade or so, after emerging from receivership, there were plenty of questions as to whether we could withstand the financial fallout of that recession and whether the economic development success of the decade before could be repeated. The 2010 so that we could keep our budgets balanced, continue to revitalize the community, not only physical parts, like converting belated industrial buildings into gleaming new developments, but also the aspect of revitalizing, that make Chelsea truly special, our community resources, from better schools to more parks, to a spirit of collaboration that would be the very envy of all those around us. As I stood in this very spot 10 years ago, ready to become president of the City Council, for 2010, I had hopes, but I couldn't know for sure what the year, and for that matter, what the decade had in store. As it turns out, 2010 was the start of another remarkable run for Chelsea. It was the year that we found out for sure that the first hotel was being built. In fact, we've enjoyed groundbreaking of the second hotel and planning for the third hotel in that year alone. And it was the year that the FBI said, "Yes, we're going to move to the largest building to be built in Chelsea in decades." It was the year that we opened another park. And despite still lower levels of local aid, we further increased our great financial standing in the eyes of Broadway, Beacon Hill, and Wall Street. I remind all of you that good things happen when you take care of your financial obligations. As I stood in this very spot 10 years ago, I did not know, one thing for certain, we councils were largely on the same page about how we would work together, and we were largely on the same page with the city administration. Those strong working relationships then allowed city government to work so well with the community. I had no idea, for example, we were only four years away from winning our second All-American City designation. But what I did have was a great sense that despite recession, we had a team of elected and appointed officials who understood that our best days were still ahead of us and very obtainable, so long as we continued to focus on what back then we called a single pro Chelsea agenda. Yes, we're all human, so some self-interest couldn't help but creep into the conversation. But in large, we knew that so much still needed to be done to put Chelsea in the best possible position to take advantage of the great planning and opportunities that great planning would create. As I stood at this very spot 10 years ago, the constant drumbeat of "there's no I in the name Chelsea" and plan to work and work to plan was fresh in our minds. Present in our actions, I fear that we, City Council, have lost a bit of that perspective. The perspective that we are elected to put our self-interests aside, honor the role we have to be both leaders of government and sometimes just supporters of the work that other leaders of city government have responsibilities to discharge from volunteer boards all the way up to our city manager. I fear that the fractured relationship and policy agendas that feel like they were hatched in a wealthy, ultra-progressive community instead of a working-class city, still needing to fight every day for the basic needs of our residents, and city government are combining to steer us in the wrong direction or stop us from promoting the type of progress that many other communities, working class or not, would love to obtain. Our success over the next decade is not about any one of us individually. It is instead about what we achieve collectively, and we can look back on how that has worked and repeating it over and over again. And again, remarkable development, All-American City, other awards, multiple bond rating increases, and so many other community revitalization happenings don't lie. Our role should be that we, as individuals, need to exert more City Council power. It should be about defending what has produced so many of the remarkable successes a city that was once the laughingstock of the entire nation has now been able to achieve. Yes, it's about defending city charter, which is the single most important reason our city government has been able to promote good public policy instead of bad political outcomes. Yes, it's about putting our individual wants aside for the collective good of our community. Yes, it's about planning the work and then working the plan and leading when necessary, but also trusting others with far more experience and accomplishments to also lead us in the right direction as well. Yes, it's about unifying the community, not creating cliques that can only succeed by dividing our community. Yes, it's about realizing the policies that work elsewhere may work here. But that Chelsea isn't everywhere else. And so we need to first consider how we balance our budgets, promote smart growth, evaluate the status of our residents, and collaborate on a single pro Chelsea agenda. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain nominations from the floor for the presidency.
I make the nomination that Counselor-at-Large Roy Abadana be nominated for President of the 2020 Chelsea City Council.
I need a second.
Second.
Any other nomination?
I nominate Counselor Vido for President for 2020.
Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Who's that for, Demali? Demali. Okay.
Close nominations?
Does somebody move to close the nominations?
I move to close the nominations for presidency.
Thank you.
When I call the roll call, you'll announce the person's name that you're in favor of. Counselor Zabit.
Roy Abadana.
Counselor Garcia.
Demali Vido.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Abadana.
Counselor Recupero.
Demali Vido.
Counselor Robinson.
Roy Abadana.
Counselor Brown.
Roy Abadana.
Counselor Vido.
Demali Vido.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado.
Roy Abadana.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor Demali Vido.
Counselor Abadana.
Roy Abadana.
Counselor Lopez. Demali Vido. One, two, three, four, five, six for Roy. One, two, three, four, five for Demali. Six votes for Counselor Abadana, five votes for Counselor Vido. Counselor Abadana is the new president.
At this time, I'd ask the city clerk to come up and square the oath for the new president.
Hi. Roy Abadana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the president.
As the president.
Of the City Council.
Of the City Council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
I want to thank my colleagues first for the vote of confidence tonight in my ability to lead the 2020 Council. I want to recognize some of the dignitaries that are here tonight. I see that we have former Counselor Juan Vega, now Chelsea Housing Authority. I also saw former Counselor Paul Nwiki in the audience here, also working for the Chelsea Housing Authority. Joining us here on the dais. Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry. Did Roseanne, sorry. Hey, Rosie. Counselor, former Counselor-at-Large Roseanne Bon Giovanni. And President. And, well, I could have said that about, I just skipped. Joining us here on the dais is State Senator, State Rep, sorry. A little jumpy here.
Take the raise.
You'll take the raise. Sal's not here, right? State Rep Danny Ryan. We do have members of the school committee also in our audience tonight. Rosemary Carlisle, I think I saw. Henry Wilson here. Josania Alfaro, Lucia Colon, Roberto Jimenez. Thank you very much for joining us here tonight. If I'm missing any other dignitaries, I apologize. I'm sorry. The new superintendent. We haven't met yet. We'll meet. Thank you. I'm sure my colleagues will join me once again to thank our family and supporters for their faith in helping all of us reach this position. You can be sure that we will act with all human mind and with all our best interest for the City of Chelsea. I want to also welcome the newest members of the City Council. Todd Taylor from District 1, welcome, as a newbie. Naomi Zabit, welcome. Comes from a longstanding Chelsea family, the actually founders, one of the original founders of the 103 synagogue. It's great to have that history here on the council tonight. Melinda Vega, who obviously has some history in the City of Chelsea, former school committee woman, niece of Counselor Juan Vega. Definitely, if Chelsea was to have, if Massachusetts has the Kennedys, Chelsea has the Vegas. Obviously, has to go. I want to encourage our numerous members to look to your colleagues for advice, provide whatever institutional and historical knowledge we have to help you form or refine your ideas on how to create solutions to issues and problems you want to address. I think you will not only find very willing colleagues, but very helpful ones. I want to thank the city manager and his staff for putting together the initiation boot camp held this weekend for our numerous members. I'm sure they learned a lot, but have many questions to follow. I would like to make aware to my colleagues and residents that 2020 will be an important year, different from past sessions as we look to tackle additional issues to our regular scheduled mandates. We will, of course, have the upcoming approval of our CIP, Capital Improvement Project, our city budget and tax rate approvals. Our next meeting alone will have important legislation and orders regarding funding for first-time homeowner assistance program and issued gear to us, a redesign for the plan for downtown Broadway, and new zoning regulations to reshape our waterfront. But this is also a year we address potential changes to our city charter as we are mandated to review it as part of our 10-year review. I plan our meeting with a city solicitor to review that process and then plan out the work ahead of us. As former city manager Guy Sandgate so often would say, it's time we plan to work and work to plan. And lastly, but as important, I will be stressing the usefulness and legitimacy of our subcommittees. As such, I will try to best utilize all of this council's individual strengths, experience, and skills in appointing each of you to a particular subcommittee so that the subject matter of those subcommittees are explored, vetted, and then brought to the council as a whole. Let us recognize that we all have outside responsibilities. And given the time constraints of our daily lives, that is nearly impossible to know all things, be everywhere, and be effective in all areas of the city government. To be truly effective, to be a truly effective group, delegation of the workload and trust in each other's capabilities is a must. With that being said, thank you all for joining for what will be the easiest meeting of the year. Before I open the nominations of Vice President, I did want to recognize, of course, our public safety officials. I see here we have the Chief of Police, of course, who led us, and also the Chief of Fire that are here today. And also I see members of both the Police Department and Fire Department. Thank you for your presence here today. With that, I will now open the nominations for Vice President. Chair recognizes Counsel Rodriguez.
I nominate Judith Garcia.
I second that motion.
Anyone to? Closing nominations?
Closing nominations. Clerk will now call the roll.
Nominate Judy.
Judith Garcia.
By name, please. Counselor Zabit.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Garcia.
Judith Garcia. Me.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Recupero.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Counselor Vido.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Abadana.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Judith Garcia. Eleven members voted for Counselor Garcia.
Judith Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the Vice President.
As the Vice President.
Of the City Council.
Of the City Council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I will now call the city manager to, I'm sorry. You're right. We still have to open the nominations for school board delegate.
I nominate Counselor Leo Robinson.
I second it.
Anyone closing?
Make a motion to close nominations?
Clerk, call the roll for vote of Leo Robinson to school committee delegate.
Seconded by Giovanni. Counselor Zabit.
Leo Robinson.
Counselor Garcia.
Leo Robinson.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Recupero.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Leo Robinson.
Counselor Vido.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor Robinson.
Counsel Abadana.
Counselor Robinson.
And Counsel Lopez.
Counselor Robinson.
Ten members voted for Counsel Robinson, one present. Counsel Robinson, delegate. Surprise, surprise. That's feedback.
I can repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Leo Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the delegate.
As the delegate.
To the school committee.
To the school committee.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
Thank you.
And the ordinances.
The City of Chelsea?
The City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations to all. At this time, I'm going to invite the city manager for his remarks to address the audience.
Honestly, I just will take a very brief moment. I want to thank the president for inviting me up, but my remarks will be extremely brief. I really just want to extend congratulations on behalf of my administration to all the elected officials, the new leadership, and particularly the new members of the city council. I give you a lot of credit because in this day and age where there's constant and toxic commentary aimed at all elected officials from the national level to local officials, it takes a lot of courage to put yourself in this arena. And the fact that you did so, those returning again, and those newcomers for the first time, you really are deserving of credit. It's so important for a city to have good people be part of local government, and it's particularly important for the City of Chelsea in these next two years because, as the new council president said, this city has real important work to do over the next two years. You have a census to do, and even though you don't have direct authority over that, for that to be successful, this council really has to have a leadership role and advocacy for that census to be effective. You, as the council president said, are going to have to oversee a charter review, which will have ramifications for the city for the next decade, and you have real important work to do. We all do right here in this chamber. Important votes to take in the next two years on affordable housing, on infrastructure, on our downtown. So all I can tell you is I'm really eager to work with you in the hope that these next two years can be among the most successful the City of Chelsea has ever had. So on behalf of my whole administration, again, I congratulate you. I wish you good luck, and I'm eager to get to work with you. Thank you.
If there's any other speakers at this moment, I will ask the representative, would he like to make any comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations. And I just wanted to bring greetings from the State House, but also from Senator Sadi Domenico and Representative Rosalie Vincent. They're often, you know, as we all know, it's a lot of cities and towns renewing their vows tonight across the Commonwealth, renewing our democracy, democracy that started here in this state for not just the rest of the country but the rest of the world. And it's a very important evening throughout the Commonwealth, and our Senator and Representative Vincent are, and we work as a team, so we split up, and that's why they're not here tonight. And I just wanted to say again, thank you, city manager. Kind of stole my words, I was going to say the same thing. This last couple of years has truly been a tough time in politics. It really has been, and there's a lot of people out there, a lot of Twitter heroes and keyboard heroes out there trying to change the world, you know, sitting behind a desk. But the folks here and some folks in the audience where the election didn't actually turn out your way, but you're here, that's what makes democracy work. Willing to put your name, your face, your address on a ballot, ask your friends and your family to come out and support you. If it wasn't for that, I don't know where we'd be as a country, but thank you all from the bottom of my heart for doing that. I say that as a resident of the Commonwealth. I appreciate it. As a fellow elected official, you know, when there's tough times, just give me a call. I think a lot of times, people in the audience, you see elected officials in a car, and you think we're masterminding the world. A lot of times, we're worried about picking up our kids, and what time is the meeting going to end? And sometimes, that's the questions we ask each other. It's not, what are you going to do on this bill and what are you going to do on that bill? It's, hey, how you getting home tonight? You taking a cab? You know, I might need a ride. Regular people, so calling me for that stuff. Don't talk to me about the important stuff because, you know, I need notes and stuff, you know? But thank you all for being here, and I just want to thank the people at Chelsea. I know we had some tough elections, but as Leo was saying earlier, this last decade has saw so many changes. We've also seen in Boston and Chelsea elected bodies that truly represent our populations. All voices are being heard, even our Republican friends. Congratulations. And that is important because that is a beacon of hope for the rest of the country. Chelsea gets along with each other, though not, you know, elections are tough, but we get along, and you guys are shining an example for the rest of the state. The state has given more money to education than we have in our history, and it's because of the Chelsea City Council, the school committee, and Superintendent Burke, who chased me around for four years. She was a driving force behind that bill. Welcome. Good luck. We're there for you. I don't have to duck Superintendent Burke anymore. Every picture that I was in the paper, she was whispering like this. We posed her for the camera, she's going, "We need more money. You got to pass that bill." I'm like, yeah, okay. But, and that's the type of leadership that Chelsea provides to the rest of the Commonwealth. Chief Keys, I've said it before, he's up there all the time with the superintendents, showing the rest of the country how police officers work with the community and how we lead in Massachusetts on so many fronts. Our nonprofits do it too. We're doing it now in housing too. So, we, you guys, thank you for being a great example, and I think I'm done here. Congratulations to all of you.
Chair will recognize Counselor Vito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank my colleagues that supported me. And being president, it means a lot to me to have the support of people that are so deeply rooted in the community. I want to also congratulate my colleague, Counsel Avellaneda. As you know, Counsel Avellaneda and I are great friends outside of city council. I'm kidding. We can laugh, but I am really looking forward to working together with Mr. Avellaneda. I feel that the city is, sorry, I'm sick. It's okay, Mommy. The city is changing, and we have to make sure that there are, all voices are heard. And so as we come upon reviewing the city charter, I think it's really important, I'm sorry. That's okay, that's okay. That's normal. I'm a mom. I just want to make sure that we work together, so I just want to publicly say my commitment to work collaboratively with every single member of the city council to make sure that we're making sure that the people of Chelsea are being heard. There's been a lot of stuff that's happened in the past year, but we really need to take some hard look in the mirrors, me included. I don't just hold the mirror to people's faces, I do it to myself. So I'm really hoping that we can all work together and making sure that we're working collaboratively to make sure that we're making Chelsea the best city that it could be. I know that we can do it, so let's just kick this off here, right? So, thank you.
Invited guests, ladies and gentlemen, friends and family, this concludes this evening's first meeting of the year. Thank you. Yes. Sorry. Chair will recognize Counselor Garcia.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. So I want to make the remarks very brief because I think the time is appropriate. I actually want to take a moment to present our former president now, Damali Vito, with a token of appreciation for your service in the past years. Thank you so much for being an incredible president and for, again, working collaboratively with many of us. This is a token of appreciation for all your work, for your leadership, and for, like our community likes to say, for being the goddess that you are. So... President.
Counselor Robinson would be remiss if I did not recognize that we have Executive Director of the Chelsea Housing Authority, Al Ewing, in the audience also. So, thank you for your presence. While we're at it, I see another president, way sitting in the back, President of the Rotary Club there, Peter Trevesky. Thank you. That will now conclude tonight's meeting. Thank you.